Of January fifth, Select Board Special Meeting. Warrants, Correspondence, Old Business, Northern Trail Rail Service, Storm Water Master Plan, Pownell Rescue Squad, Planning Commission Board Members, Property Cleanup Questionnaires, CAT TV, Public Comment, Executive Session Personnel, and Adjourn. Can I entertain a motion?
I'd like to have some amendments to the agenda, please.
Okay.
Addition, actually. Under Old Business, I'd like to add the kennel.
Okay.
I'd like to add, under ARPA Funding.
Okay.
And I'd like to add a budget meeting date. We need to set a budget meeting date. I believe one more.
Okay.
Work session.
All right, anything else?
Um. Joel, I don't, we don't have some of the things that you were coming in for on this. We need to add the road on this agenda. Cause it's not, it's not totally under your Storm Waste Water.
No, no.
So we need to.
Add a couple of things, road business, I guess.
Yep, so we need to add road business.
I'll put that right under Storm Water. That way Joel can finish and go.
Goods.
You want to put somewhere else?
Well, you're here, you're here for the Storm Waste Water Plan, right? The Master Plan. Okay.
We also move the Rescue Squad first. They're in here. Becky Levine is here. They have another meeting later.
We can, we can put her after, um. We can put her before Correspondence, I guess. If that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Alright, so we're gonna move Pownell Rescue Squad up to four.
Right after Warrants.
Four B.
I was just thinking if Joel wasn't here for the Storm Water Master Plan, we can move him, but if he's gonna be here, we can put him right after that.
So just put.
Road Rose Norman. Yeah, Road Business.
Alright, so Road Business is under Storm Water.
Yep. Is that all right, Joel?
Okay, Joel, yep. Alright. Any other changes? Alright, so can I entertain a motion?
Move to approve the agenda with the amendments and the additions.
Can I have a second?
I'll take it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Bye.
Okay. Approval of minutes of January fifth, Select Board Special Meeting.
Move to approve the minutes, January fifth.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Warrants.
I believe I'm in one.
Yes, you are. I got you right here.
Okay.
Um. Accounts payable for twelve twenty-seven for four thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Accounts payable for twelve thirty for twenty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. Accounts payable for nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. Accounts payable one twelve twenty-two for fifty thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Can I please entertain a motion?
Move to approve the warrants for accounts payable.
Can I have a second?
Um, mention dates.
Sorry. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
I just want to make sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, payroll. Twelve thirty twenty-one for eleven thousand one hundred and twelve dollars and one cent. Can I entertain a motion? We should do them separately.
Is that the one I'm in?
No, you're not in this one.
I'll move to approve that payroll warrant. Stack it up.
Any discussion? All those who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Payroll for seven, one seven twenty-two
Yep.
For ten thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Mike, you are in this one.
That's right.
It's called, can I entertain a motion?
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. Um, payroll one nine twenty-two for ten thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Can I entertain a motion?
Same moves.
Stack it up.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 You. Okay. So now we're gonna bring up Becky Levine from Pownell Rescue Squad. Please let her in, Megan.
Hello.
Hi Becky, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Would you like to start?
Sure. Okay, so we just wanted, um, to meet with you guys. Uh, in the past, up until this year, the town has covered our workman's comp insurance. Um, last year, there was a bit of a um, question whether the town would continue to cover it. Uh, we worked with Linda for quite a bit and something happened and it uh, was covered. And this year, uh, we worked with him a little bit and due to the fact that we're not a full volunteer service anymore, uh, we were told that, that your, um, the workman's comp that you have will not continue to cover us for that reason, and also because we don't have any other policies with that. Um, so as of the first of the year, we had to get our own workman's comp insurance, um, which is quoted for this year at eighteen thousand dollars. Um, so we were trying to see if it was something the town would, um, continue to, to pay for or a portion of it, because that's a pretty large bill on our end that we haven't had to pay in the past. Um, and we did meet with Tim, um, about two weeks ago, I think. Um, and you guys were only paying like twelve hundred dollars for a workman's comp policy for us, which if anyone was injured, it wouldn't have even, even covered anything. Um. So we're just coming to the town to see if it was something that, uh, that portion of the bill or some portion of it could be assisted with us.
So how many volunteer hours do you cover right now?
Oh, volunteer, it depends week to week. Um. We had, uh, three, four years ago, we switched over to paid staff, but we do have, um, volunteers still, myself, Mark, and a couple other people, uh, who are considered volunteers when we're not there during the day or, uh, when we're responding from home at night. Um, so volunteer hours kind of depends week to week.
Like what's an average?
Uh.
You wanna say five hours, ten hours?
Between all of us? I'd say probably forty hours of volunteer time a week.
Okay, and what do you pay out in payroll a year?
Payroll a year, last year ours was almost three hundred thousand.
And, um, for the paid portion of this, you also cover Bennington, other counties, correct? Williams Town, Mass?
Yes, on mutual aid basis.
Yep. Okay, Mike, do you have a question?
I gotta, I got some questions, Beck.
What?
Um. Do you, does, is Pownell Rescue Squad right now providing, um, twenty-four seven coverage to the town of Pownell?
Yes. Twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, somebody is.
Pownell Rescue Squad is able to cover the town of Pownell twenty-four seven, three sixty-five?
Yes.
How, how are you guys doing that when you're doing transports to Albany or Dartmouth or wherever they happen to be?
We have an on-call crew for those days that we take transfers. Um, so what that does is, so if Mark and I are the crew on duty at night or during the day and the transfer comes in from the hospital to a different facility, we call, if there's somebody on call, we call them in to cover town or take the transfer. The town is never left unattended unless we're transporting and we only have one crew. So if you call for the ambulance, we come pick you up and another call comes in during that time, there may be a time where we call mutual aid. Um, last year, we only gave up eleven calls to other agencies, and that was only because we were on other calls. It was never because we were not staffed.
When you, when you say you're on other calls, you mean you're on other calls in the town of Pownell or on other calls?
It could've been either without.
In general total.
In general, yeah. Without looking at, I do have a spreadsheet.
Well, no, I'm, I'm sure you do. I'm, I'm just. So, so out of those eleven calls that you weren't able to respond to last year, it wasn't necessarily that you were on another call in the town of Pownell. It could've been doing a transfer to Dartmouth or Boston or whatever.
Nope, nope. It would've never been that the town was unattended because we took a transfer.
What, what would they, what would those conditions have been?
It would've been that we were, we were already on a call, a nine-one-one call, not a transfer.
From, oh, okay, so you run a nine-one-one call, but it could've been a nine-one-one call to the town of Bennington.
It could've been a mutual aid.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So in the money that you're asking for, seeing that you guys are now providing services to towns outside of Pownell, are you asking Bennington, Shass, wherever you are providing service, are you asking them to cover part of your workman's comp?
We have not.
Okay.
This was all sprung up, us, on us in the end of November.
No, no, I, I, I get it. I, I get it, Beck. I, I.
I know, I know, I'm just.
I'm just trying, what I'm trying to do, Becky, is I'm trying to spearhead head off questions that are, that potentially in my mind can come up or uh, or will come up. You know, not, not just from the board, but will come up from the general public. I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to get ahead of it, that's all.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I think that's all I have.
Jamie?
Pretty much covers what we're talking about.
Ronnie?
None.
None, okay. So.
Becky, what do, what did we pay, what did the town give you last year or the previous years for workman's comp?
Twelve hundred dollars.
I think that, I think it was like twelve or fourteen hundred, if I remember correctly from talking to Tim. They, we never even saw a bill. It went directly to you guys.
Oh, okay.
But we don't cover anything else. Like we don't cover any fire departments or anything like that.
No.
Up until last year.
Since they went to pay, that's why this came up.
Right, but I want to correct your statement first, though, is before we covered, we have a, a workman's comp policy for the fire, the fighters and, um, at the time, it was a collective one.
At the time altogether?
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think the town, dating back when I was involved in the fire department, there, there was a big argument over that years and years and years ago that, about the workman's comp and the, and the town did historically, for the fire department, I can't even speak for the Rescue Squad because I was never involved there. But historically, the town paid workman's comp for the fireh, for the fire department. But I, I don't know what the total was. I have no clue. I, I really don't know. And I can't even speak for the Rescue Squad because I was never involved in that. But I remember, I just remember huge battles over that. Back and forth.
I know the first year I, when I became a member here, um, that was one of the subjects that came up and that's why I know we've got a policy encapsulating all the volunteer organizations that, for municipal services for the town. So.
Okay, um. I, don't you have a petition out there to ask the taxpayers?
Uh, we took that down because it was filled out incorrectly and to begin with, and then there, we were just informed about that and so we took it down at the beginning of this week.
But don't you still have time to correct it?
Uh, no, today, or well, yes, but the eighteenth is the deadline. Thirteenth, or today. Today was the deadline.
Oh, okay, I realize that, I'm sorry.
Yep, nope, that's okay.
So, so what you're asking us, Becky, is to approve, um.
A pay in this eighteen thousand?
Paying eighteen thousand dollars? Is that what, is that what you guys are here for?
Yes.
Okay. Just so I'm clear, because I was, I was unclear actually before that.
I don't wanna sound cold. I really don't. But I think if you're paying payroll of over two hundred thousand dollars.
Three hundred.
Uh, three hundred thousand, excuse me, that you're responsible pretty much for the workman's comp.
That's usually part of a business.
That's part of a business and as far as I'm concerned, since you have such a large payroll, you're a business now, unfortunately. And so that goes with the business part of it. I mean, I will always support you guys and I will always give donations and do whatever I can, but I find it hard to swallow going from twelve hundred to eighteen thousand dollars of taxpayers' money. That's why I was looking for the posi, the petition to go on the ballot. And then the people can decide.
Right, so I mean, before, when you guys were covering it for the twelve hundred dollars or whatever it was, there wasn't full coverage for the town. Now we are covering and providing coverage twenty-four seven. And in an order, we've gotta face it now, volunteerism isn't something that people do anymore. Um, so in order for us to be able to staff the town the way that we do, we had to move to pay. There, there was no other option.
Mm-hmm, and I understand that.
People don't wanna do the training.
So what is the board's pleasure?
I, I need to have more information um, before I form an opinion one way or the other. I, I don't have an opinion right now. Um. But I, I'm gonna need some more information, for sure.
So we can, we can include that discussion in a, in, in a, a special session, in a special budget session. I think we can do that.
As long as we warn it in that, as long as we warn it in our budget session, in that special meeting.
Yep.
We could, we could do that. And I think that's, I think that when we talk about that on our old business, I think that we should add that Rescue Squad into that budget meeting.
Yeah, just a, uh, and just a, a general comment is that, uh, you know, we, we are, we are, as board, wanting to take a hard look at our, our budget and see, see what we can do to return more to the taxpayers.
Yes.
Um, so, um, it makes it hard when we're heading in the upward direction.
You came at a bad time, Beck.
That's, uh, we were actually looking for cuts, not for, not for increases. Um, I do believe that the, uh, the, um, well, I, I think they did put out that today was the, today was the last day for the.
It was.
For the petitions.
Yeah, I thought it was the eighteenth.
Okay, so, um, Becky, we're gonna put you on for our special, uh, budget meeting and we'll make sure that Megan contacts you so you guys can be involved, okay?
Absolutely, and if you guys need any paperwork, numbers, whatever, just let us know.
What would you like from?
I.
More information, Mike?
I, I gotta think about it a little bit.
Okay.
And I really knew, um, of what exactly I want, because I don't wanna make them go on a, a fishing mission, so to speak.
Right.
Okay, you know, but, but I, I need a little bit more time to digest and, and, um, you know, and, and I just need a little more time to digest it. Um, because, because as Bob stated, um, you know, we're, we're gonna have a budget work session and because I don't think anyone sitting here is comfortable with
Adding eighteen.
What we came up with for a budget.
Right. Adding more money.
And then adding another eighteen, but, but I also I look at, I've been on, I've been on that volunteer end, um, for thirty-something years. Okay, I know, and I know that it was dying when I got out. I get it. I, I totally get it. Um, so, I, you know, I have mixed feelings here, for sure. Um, you know, I have my heart saying one thing and then my head saying another, so.
Absolutely.
You know, I need to, I need to.
We all support you.
I, I, yeah, I need to digest it myself personally.
No, no, we understand that.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll get, I'll get Megan to reach out to you, Becky, with what I would like. I think all of us would do that. What I'd like to see is that next time we meet with you guys on whatever date we choose, after we're done talking with you and move, move down the, our agenda. Is that, is that fair enough?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
One, one question is, uh, what percentage of volunteer hours per year, uh, versus paid?
Though, that exact number I would have to pull, but like I said, it's mainly week to week dependent, um, but I'd say probably forty to fifty hours a week, um, at a minimum, and then I can run those numbers.
But I, I think, so I think in all fairness to Becky, questions like that, Jamie, I think we should send her through to Megan. Those are the kinds of things, exactly.
Yep.
So, and I think, I think we should get those to her as quickly as possible.
Yep.
Um, so that you can prepare, Becky. I don't wanna, you know, reschedule meetings for next Wednesday night, say, yeah, I don't wanna give you more questions Wednesday morning.
No, I don't wanna blindside you at all. We want you to be prepared as much as we are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
That's why I was asking the.
No, I, I know. That's a great question. It should go there and ask, you know, what percentage of hours are paid and what percentage of volunteer and that.
I agree. So if anybody has any questions, please get them to Megan so we can get.
As quickly as we can.
Alright, Becky, thank you so much for joining us tonight and you'll be hearing from us soon.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Becky.
Thank you.
Bye.
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 Alright. We did warrants correspondence. So correspondence. We only had one from Jim Kosis. You might mention to the board tonight that if they don't list anything under Old Business, they can't discuss any Old Business. There should be a heading within the agenda similar to all items that rarely fall under a heading of New Business. If something from a prior meeting is not specifically put on the agenda, it cannot be discussed under Old Business. It's like the board member wanting to discuss the forensic audit because it's Old Business, not allowed since it was not specifically put in the agenda.
So.
So.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't wanna interrupt you.
That's okay. This is not true. I would like whoever is out there that wants to send these kinds of emails or questions to the board to do research by calling the LCT or by getting a Robert Rules book and looking it up. Because we have the right to take the agenda tonight before we approve it and change it any way we'd like. We could wipe it out and start all over if we would like. That is in the rulebook. That's all I have to say on it. Mike?
Yeah, I, I have one thing. When, when someone in the general public makes statements and sends emails to, um, I think that email went to all of us, when that email comes out or, or a statement, a letter, however they, however they present it, if they're saying we're doing something wrong, give me a statute. Give me, give me proof. Don't say that it's wrong.
Because you think it.
Without proof.
Exactly.
Is it thirty-two VSA, twenty-seven, forty-seven, one? I don't know. Where, where is it wrong? Don't come off on the day of a meeting and say that it's wrong, because I have a huge problem with that. If it's wrong, state why. State where. State where you got your information from. Don't just shoot from the hip. We just spent a hundred thousand dollars on a forensic audit from shooting from the hip.
Thank you.
Okay? We spent a hundred grand from shooting from the hip. Show me where it's wrong. That, and if it is wrong, then we're wrong. I'm fine with it. But as Angie stated, when we call this meeting the order and we, and when we approve the agenda, we could wipe it all out and we could play bingo for, sit here for an hour and a half and play bingo, because that's our choice.
The only thing I would add, I, I, that is true. We can, we can, we can change the agenda. We can do whatever we want. I think it is i- it is, and I think we all agree that it is good practice that if we know what we're gonna be talking about, absolutely put it out there.
Right.
Uh, we'll put it out there. We're not gonna use Old Business to kind of sneak something in.
Absolutely not.
That's not gonna, that's not what we're, that's not, and that's not what we're trying.
And I'm getting very tired of certain people saying that we are trying to hide something that we're being unfair, we're being sneaky. I think this board is extremely open and we have done everything in our power to make sure that everything is out there and everything is on the website, it's on the Facebook page. I have a real problem with it, a huge problem. If you have a problem with me, then come talk to me. You have a problem with this board, then come talk to one of us board members.
Or all of us.
Or all of us.
Come to a board meeting.
Come sit at a board meeting, yes.
Better yet, draw yourself up a petition and jump in. Both feet.
Alright. Correspondence is done. Thank you very much. Now I lost my agenda.
Old business.
Alright. Old Business. Mike, what would you like to start with?
First thing I'd like to start with is, um, let's set a budget meeting date, so that we don't get sidetracked from that.
Okay. Does she have a calendar in front of her?
I do, I do. I've got a, I've got a calendar right now.
Does she have any?
Megan, do you have any meetings scheduled next week, Wednesday, Thursday-ish?
No, there's nothing scheduled.
If possible, I would like to keep it regular Thursdays, if possible.
And that's fine, and I think that works, um, I think that works for Ellen because I would like to invite her to the next budget work session.
Absolutely.
So, um, shoot for, shoot for the twentieth. Um, do we want to shoot for six-thirty instead of seven o'clock?
Uh, do you have a hard time getting here, Ronnie, as earlier time?
I do, yeah. My meetings were supposed to be seven, that's what I.
Well, then we'll keep it at seven, right? That's fine.
But we're asking your opinion.
If you want it earlier. Try to make it. If I can't make it, I won't make it. Just do it.
Alright, let's keep it at seven if possible. Is that alright with you, Bob?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Alright.
Either one's good.
So what this, what's the date?
The twentieth of January at seven o'clock.
Is that okay, Megan?
Sounds good. I'll put it on the calendar.
Thank you, Megan.
And we'll make sure we do the proper warnings and all that, Megan, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Um, the other thing I have is a quick, should be really quick, is there's, um, there's some things flying around town, uh, about the kennel and the proposed kennel and the, um, that Leonard has worked diligently on. Um, I just wanna make a statement that this kennel, the donations, um, that are on social media and, and I don't even know where else. I've just seen a solicit, solicitation for donations on social media. This Select Board in the, in the town of Pownell, in no way, shape, or form is in the solicitation of those donations. We, we, even though the donations are, are the checks or whatever, it says be made out to the town of Pownell, uh, the town of Pownell is in no way, shape, or form involved in that, as far as the Select Board is considered, or concerned, sorry.
Right.
Uh, you guys have any comments on that?
No, we can't take and solicit.
We can't solicit, but if people are going to do it, they need to put on a check and a memo, donation.
Correct.
For the dog kennel.
Or for whatever they wanna take.
Or whatever donation they want, if they wanna send it to the new town office or whatever it is. Whatever the donation is, they need to put it in the memo, what the donation is for.
And then Ellen will take and put it on a donation line item.
Correct.
Faded for.
Yes, correct.
So, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So what brings me, what's bringing me into one that might be a little lengthy, I don't think it should be that long, but um, ARPA funding. So when I was in here yesterday, working with Ellen on some budget numbers, um, some things that came up, popped up yesterday, well, just while I was sitting here working, was the ARPA funding, there's, the rules have changed again. Um, Megan was working on some research on that yesterday. Um, I, I'd like to propose to the board and I believe the ARPA funds can pay for this person, pretty positive they can, and I think we need to just make sure. But I'd like to propose to the board that we hire a person specifically on a temporary basis, hire a person specifically to administer and find out information involved in this ARPA funding, because I just think that, that we're either gonna potentially, the potential's there if we misspend money, then we have to pay it back, if we.
We have a great provision of government services, so you can use the money to pay.
That's what I thought. Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
So, um, I just, and, and I'm not sure that we can hire it right off the bat. I mean, we need to have somebody who is versed in, in ARPA, which I don't think there's a whole bunch of people out there, but I think we need to try to get somebody.
That in government.
Even like a, like a temporary consultant from either VLCT or Beamer, one of those organizations that we already do business with.
That.
That specifically knows, uh.
Or even come another town if they have somebody and they would be willing to share.
That's right, if we were sharing a person, I don't have a problem with that. I just think that, that we're either gonna lose out on spending.
Yes, right.
That, where we can really use it, or we're gonna misspend. I just don't wanna get into a situation like that.
Thank you.
E- either side of it. E- either side of it, where we lose or, you know, 'cause it's a lose-lose either way. I do, and I, I, um, it's, it's way too much to put onto Megan, um.
Current.
Uh, uh, given her.
Who has the expertise?
Right.
Right. Not that she couldn't do it because she probably could, but I'm afraid that if we really don't fall this on her, then, then the rest of her work may suffer. And I don't want that to happen. So I propose that we hire a temporary consultant to, um, paid for by ARPA funds to, um, research and administer the ARPA funding. I guess administered would be the right word.
I think, um, I thi- we would have to do a little investigation first, right? So maybe have Megan reach out to the VLCT and reach out to some of the organizations that we already do business with. Find out if they offer those services. What do they cost? And then, uh, and, and perhaps, uh, call on the gentleman behind us who I think can offer some insight.
Yes.
And that's fine. I mean, I, I'm willing to take some absolutely.
Absolutely.
I would suggest that you, uh, talk to Jim Sullivan at DCRC.
Very good idea.
We do have a staff member who's been trying to sort all this out and assisting towns on this question. So if you were to contact Jim and, uh, voice your concerns and your thoughts about this, he may, he may tell you that, um, we'll put, we'll put one of our staff members on this or, I don't know. But before you, I'm just suggesting, why don't you go out and hire somebody?
That's an excellent.
That's a great idea.
Doesn't hurt to ask questions.
I was just gonna say, say your name.
Just for the record.
Uh, my name's Jim Henderson. I work for the Bennington County Regional Commissioner.
Thank you, Jim. I.
We know who you are, but they don't.
I'm the environmental planner, not the ARPA planner.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I, I think that's a great idea. I just, I just wanna go ahead with, uh, research. I guess maybe we research this out to start with and maybe we can act on it. Put it on our agenda for our regular meeting on the twenty-seventh. That gives us a couple of weeks to reach out to Jim and VLCT or whoever, whoever. Is that?
Uh, I think I, uh, I think Jim is correct. I think Jim Sullivan is probably the best resource we can have for that.
Yeah.
Probably the first stop.
First stop.
Then ask, uh, ask, uh.
No, I agree with that totally. So.
We can have Megan reach out.
I'd like to, I'd like to move that we research hiring a.
Consultant.
Consultant for, um.
Administering and applying for funds.
Administering and applying.
Searching what we're eligible for.
Exactly. For the ARPA funds.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just think it's too much for Megan.
I, I agree. I think it's too much for anybody. My God, it changes daily.
I think you need a certain person.
Every email, I'm like, oh my gosh.
The one you don't sign.
Yeah, let me see your panel, buddy.
Okay, so moving on to Northern, uh, tier rail service. Megan Randall, is she in, Megan?
She is not.
Do I have the statement? Oh, I did. Oh, I did.
Should be the last page in the packet.
I'm all mixed up now. I lost, I've messed everything up.
Here's my packet if you want.
At the last page?
I, I have all the pages.
Oh, there it is. Last page. I know it is.
That's one.
Right here. All right. So what is she asking us to do? We just move forward with our interest into this? Megan?
Yes, I believe so. I'm not sure what else she wanted to talk about. I sent her the agenda, but she's not in here.
All right. So the rail service is a Massachusetts Department of Transportation has recently undertaken a study on what's called the Northern Tier of Passenger Rail Transportation in Massachusetts, including the feasibility of an extension from Boston to North Adams. The study will also explore continuing their service from North Adams onto Albany or possibly Schenectady, both of which destinations connect to New York City. This is a question in Pownell, but I suggest that we have nothing to lose by expressing interest in the possibilities of more convenient rail services from here. Again, by expressing interest, the select board would be making a commitment or would not be making a commitment or spending money. Rather than the board could send a representative of any relevant community meeting held by the MDOT so we could get a better sense of what is involved. There will soon be money in the federal pipeline for infrastructure improvements. Pownell should be poised with a future-oriented vision to take advantage of this. Again, this does not mean that we are making a commitment. It means we are opening a door that may and will have future financial benefits to the town of Pownell. Benefits may include more tourists coming to destination Pownell, a place to hike mountain trail or ride bikes through a gorgeous scenery, a possible passenger station in Pownell where, um, there exit several sidings and where Pownell owns right of ways. For example, near the sewage treatment plant, a cafe is said in the station and a car rental or taxi service. A future communal rail service to Albany or Schenectady. Ultimately, the inter-model hub, freight, passenger, and commuter rail interacts to bring business to Pownell and help businesses already here. Think TAM, who could recycle goods elsewhere. Farmers could also ship products more cheaply. Pownell is a remarkable well place to undertake interstate cooperation on this rail service. We have the rail's sidings and the up-to-date crossings. Pan Am Rails is for sale and a new partner could well usher in a new era with them, especially if we have a plan. Pown- Pownell borders both Massachusetts and New York. We must start to see ourselves as part of a wild wor- a wider world and take advantage of our gorgeous and scenic assets. So I agree with this, um. Anybody on the board would be willing to go to the meetings?
Not Wednesday night.
Huh?
Also on Wednesday night.
Um, have Megan, um, do some more research and find out when the meetings are and then get back to us. Or she could be the representative if she wanted to be and go to all the meetings. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm all for looking into this. Anybody else have any? Oh, yes, true.
So the request is just that we express interest.
That we express interest.
But now, are we expressing interest by de- uh, assigning a designee or are we just saying, sure, we're interested? Um, I mean, it, it, it is interesting.
It's very interesting.
I know she stated she'd be willing to, but I, uh, to go to the meetings, um, initially, when it was brought up, uh, she was on right now.
I thought she was gonna be here, actually.
But it doesn't hurt to have one of us go also now and then, just make, you know, to put a little teeth into it.
Would that be something that you'd be interested in as long as it's not Wednesday night? I'm pretty well stretched myself.
No. That's why I said, as long as it's not Wednesday night, I would take it to it.
And it doesn't have to be a board member either. I mean, it can be.
Well, she's asking for a board member.
It could, it could be somebody on.
It could be somebody.
One of our other boards also is the way she's worded it. The planning commissioner.
Or official.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess we have to reach out to them and see if anybody has interest also.
Okay. All right, moving on. Stormwater master plan, Joel and Jim Henderson. Would you guys like to set up the table? Or are you comfortable over there? Whatever you would like.
I'll stand up and you move over.
We have an empty chair right here for you if you wanna sit here and Joel can sit down there or you want me to move Joel and you can sit next to Jim.
I brought, I brought a map to show an example of, um, one of, one of the stormwater master plans that was developed for one of our other towns. In the county, this is from, uh, the town of Sandgate. Um, now, just to back us, about five years ago, uh, Joel worked with Charlie Stiles of the Bennington County Conservation District to put together a grant application to, uh, create one of these stormwater master plans. And, um, and that grant was not, uh, um, approved. So this isn't a new thought, uh, for, particularly for the highway department. And what, what this would do, um, well, I'll, one more step back. Um, it used to be that towns were put in for an application to get the funding. And, uh, and we did that for five different towns. And, uh, last year, the state of Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation decided, no more grant applications. We are going to choose seven towns in the state of Vermont and hire one consultant to do all those towns. So that's what they did last year. Manchester was one of those towns that they did. And they put out an RFP and, uh, and they hired a consultant to do all seven of those towns. Um, I got a phone call from Jim Pease, who works for Department of Environmental Conservation two weeks ago, saying, we have additional funding for this year to do another group of towns. Do you have any towns in your mind, in your region in mind that would, uh, be interested in participating this year? And I said, Bennington, North Bennington, and Pownell. And what they would do, no financial commitment to the town. It will cost you nothing. They're paying for it. They will have a consultant meet with the board at a kickoff meeting to discuss the pro- the project and all the technical aspects of it. Their expectations, your expectations, what the final product would be. And I can discuss what those final products would be. So the consultant will then go out with Joel or any other person in town and look at what we already know, our problem areas where there are issues that need to be fixed. They could be issues that need to be fixed because this, the, um, Clean Water Act is saying by a certain date, you need to have X, Y, Z fixed. Or it could be an area that Joel knows, this is always an issue and we have to come back and fix this problem year after year. So the first step would be to do a site visit of the town. Then they will come and do a complete inventory of the town and they'll produce a map like this that shows where they've identified where there are issues. And they could be things like undersized culverts or large culverts that aren't big enough for the stream going through them, so they're creating erosion at the outlet. Um, but areas where there's embankments that are sliding, um, a whole variety of issues. They will produce this map showing us where they found the problems. We will have another meeting and we will prioritize. We'll tell them, these are what we consider to be the, the major problems. And they will put them through a ranking system. They have a matrix that will rank them, prioritize them from high to low. On top of that, we'll take the list of the high priority projects and they will do three conceptual designs of, of, of the engineering that would address the issue and fix the issue. I will say that every town that has participated in, in this process, they have been very pleased with the results and they have a hundred percent grant application success rate on grants that they have applied for based on their stormwater master plan. And they usually start, start off with the high ones that have the conceptual design. Because, you know, when you put in for a grant application, some of these ones are the high-ticket ones. They see that they've been fully studied and they also see, here's the engineering design for it. So that cost has already been taken care of. So, um, I'm here to ask if you're interested in participating in this. Um, I wrote a draft letter of commitment. That is, that's all they need from you right now.
Need a copy of that.
Yeah, I got an email. I don't have a copy, I'm for sure.
Right now, all they need is, um, the, the, the select board to sign on to the letter of commitment. And I've spelled out in there what, what you really are committing to is that you will host them at a kickoff meeting. The road, the road foreman and anybody else will show them, um, take them on a site visit. Then we will review their initial study and help to prioritize the sites. Then they will produce the final draft of the plan, a report. And, um, and they will present it at a public meeting and they're asking that you will commit to allow them to come in and, and present to them, to you and the public, their, um, their final report. Perhaps, I think, in my opinion, the most important part of the report is each one of these sites on this map that is identified has its own project sheet. So that you can flip through it and go, okay, well, what is RD two on this road? What does that mean? You flip through it and it will, it will have pictures, a map of that area.
Examples.
And then it will tell you, it will say, this is the problem. This is what needs to be done to address that problem. So every, every site on here has one of these project sheets. It's full of really good, important information, in my opinion. Um, so all I'm here to do is to tell you about this offer. And if you're, uh, willing to sign on, then they need a letter of commitment. And they would start doing this, uh, probably early summer. And it would probably take a two, it would be a two-year process.
So basically, we'll put together a plan. Whether we like it or not, we're in, in the municipal roads, uh, with the permitting and, uh, we're in the stormwater. So, um, this puts together a plan. Uh, it'll lay out three plans, like Jim said, uh, and it costs them, pretty much, put the cost in. And, uh, get, kinda gives you something to, to budget for and like Jim said, be way easier to get grants to do these projects. They're projects that we would be doing anyhow, that we would have to do.
We'd already have the end.
You know what I mean?
That's a really good point that Joel brings up. The Clean, the Clean Water Act has established what you probably have heard of, the municipal road general permit. And, um, the town has to bring up all their roads to new best management practices that the state has adopted two years ago. And frankly, most of this that they will identify will be issues that you have to do anyways.
Anyway, yeah.
So, so Joel, just so that everyone is clear, me included, this is, these are potentially projects like you did on Carpenter Hill, Man Hill South.
Yeah, um, Pratt Road, right?
Yeah. Okay. So which are, right, Jim? Okay. Just, I just wanna make sure that our viewers are clear.
Right.
I, I was clear on it, but, um, you know, I, I just wanted to clarify for sure for myself too. And, and these are, these are the engineering costs for these plans. We, we're, we're gonna be forced from the Clean Water Act to do whatever they come up with anyways. So on, on some of them, not all, but some of them, right?
Every project that they identify would fall under that municipal road general permit.
Good point. Thank you. I, I, yeah, right.
Because just to clarify, the municipal road general permit applies to roads that are within a hundred feet of the surface water.
Right.
Whereas they're gonna look at, uh, the entire road system.
It's all of our roads, isn't it?
And they'll also look, they'll also look at parking lots, like at the school or a center. And for, for an example, um, one of the projects that they identified in, in Arlington is at the, the high school and the, and the elementary school are across the streets from each other. And there's perennial issues of high water washing down the hill into the parking lot where the library is. That would not be covered under the municipal road general permit. But it is a significant stormwater issue. And, uh, so they, they came up with a design to fix that. That involves like infiltration of the surface water, getting it into the ground through various techniques. Um, another one was at this, um, Howard Park in Shasberry, which, um, similar scenario, a large gravel parking lot. All the, the, the stormwater drains into one corner and forms into this big mud puddle. And when the water does eventually leave, there's a layer of mud. Um, so they, they want to create an infiltration system to get the water. Um so they they want to create an infiltration system to get the water and back and back into the ground sooner and quicker. Um so it does go beyond what is required of the municipal road general permit, I want to make that clear.
Right.
Um one thing that one of the towns, North Bennington and Bennington have agreed and signed on to do this. One of them had a concern that we're they're gonna open up a can of worms. And find a project and then say, you have to fix this. The fact is, is that the only thing that the town has to fix. Are those roads that are hydrologically connected within a hundred feet of a surface water. Or if there's a parcel that has over three acres of impervious surface. Which are like a large parking lot or something. They will have to be addressed based on um the requirements of the Vermont Clean Water Act. But other than that, just because they tell you, this is a problem issue, you should fix it, doesn't mean you have to. But you will continue to have to deal with it.
Correct.
So uh so I just a a couple of questions is uh uh when you, at the beginning, you were talking about grouping the seven towns together. And then they asked whether or not there was any towns and it was Bennington, North Bennington and Powell. Uh uh could be one of those or three of those seven towns that one consultant would be assigned to. And the consultant.
That's what they're gonna do this year as well.
Okay, and then and the consult and um uh just to make sure we're clear, the the consultant is actually being paid for by the state.
Correct.
So the and then the output of that is going to be something similar to this, except for Powell.
That's correct.
Something similar to this that could be and each one of these, each one of these items that comes out of here is a is a a potential diff. Another project and it could run anywhere from the gambit of of being, you know, close to surface water, which a lot of our ours are. But then we have a lot of roads up in the mountains too, that don't fall in that category, but still have the issues of stormwater and drainage. And runoffs and and those are the kinds of problems that this would solve. And then coming out of it, we would have each one of these. So when we said three conceptual plans, is it like each one of these comes up with three conceptual plans?
We would pick um.
Prioritize.
We would have a meeting with them and we would look at all of these. And based on our feedback, they would pick three of these projects and come up with a conceptual. Engineering design for it. So you know, on this particular map for Sangay, let's say there's thirty five projects. Out of the thirty five projects, we would say we want to have conceptual designs on one, two and three.
Oh, okay, so it wasn't three conceptual, it wasn't three different designs for the same project? One each for three projects, okay. And then and then based on those conceptual designs, and that would be the prioritization, right? Thirty five of these and we would prioritize three. The the, if I'm hearing correctly, the only risk that I I heard was that you you could potentially find something that you have to do. But then you might find that later anyway and then you have.
But uh one thing is, we do have erode, er- erode erosion report. Already, if you guys remember back, and that is on the state website and everything, so it's already out there.
Right.
It it's not like this is gonna be a big surprise, it's already.
The information's already at the state level.
Yeah, sure.
I would just like to add to what Joel said. That road erosion inventory that he's referring to, which is on a state website. Um and it was a requirement, the town had to do this. Um that is only looking at the roads that are within a hundred feet of the surface water. Joel could tell you right now that there's some roads that aren't next to a surface water that have significant erosion issues. And they're always having to go back and grade them or you know, fix them. So they're gonna look at all the roads, not just the ones that are required to be fixed.
Yeah, we've got quite a few that turn right into soup.
Absolutely, um and and it could just be uh like Joel, Joel could say to them, this road. Even though it's not near a surface water, every spring, uh cars are up to their axles. Because we don't have a sufficient road bed. And and so they may say, okay, well, then you need to raise this road bed and create a better crown. Even if it's not next to a a a a stream or a river or a wet.
Right, so a- and that means that uh like some of the roads that that we always have the runoff problems and we always have to go and resurface and.
Yeah.
And you you cars sinking and all that stuff.
Yeah, which is all of them, so.
How many miles of the road do we have?
But that means, but that means that what is out of this uh could be and well, it it. Um I guess what I'm I'm trying to get a good a. Everything has pros and cons and I'm having a hard time coming up with a a a good pros and.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and that's and that's that's uh kind of where I'm going, but it it so far, it sounds like. Like even if we had projects that we had to budget for, some of that budget would be taken out of of some of the resurfacing and other things. The maintenance would go down because we did the project. Um right, and that's that that's best case.
Or the other.
But then the the the, but then the 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 worst case is that, you know, we we do the project and we don't really see any any benefit to our to our budget or anything else.
But the other thing with those three identifiers in that work being done. That stuff that we don't have to take and spend grant money on or budgeted money on for the engineer. Site plan, the engineer plan and all that that's required.
Right, this is the, this is the output of the state-funded consultant.
Correct.
And then from from that point, then then it would become a a panel project that we would have to budget for. I want to make that clear that this isn't all free.
Right.
Because we uh so and then we'd have to budget for something.
Budget and apply for grants.
We have to do that normally anyways if you have to fix a road.
Well, we can apply for grants and by having this master plan, you have a better. Uh uh chances of getting grant money.
Yeah, the project that's identified in this stormwater master plan would rise to the top of the grant competition. We would put right in that grant application as identified in the two thousand twenty-two stormwater master plan. Created by X Y Z consultant, this project, and then we would have that project sheet. It may not even be one of the projects that needs to be engineered. It could just be a simple culvert replacement, but there would be one of those project sheets. And we would add that in to the grant application as an addition. So it just makes every single future grant, like next year when we put in for a better road grant. It will rise that grant up to a higher standard than if we didn't have this as a background.
And and so to do this project right here, Jim, so so unclear. There's there's no cost to the town, it's just we commit to this project.
That's correct, you you would be committing to um having one meeting with the consultant at the beginning of the project. So that we can flush it all out and discuss it and and have a a discussion of the process, the technical aspects of it. Um what are the expectations? Then there will be um a commitment of, you'll commit that Joel will attend a site visit. And take them around to what we consider to be the high uh problem areas. Then you would commit to having um another meeting, most predominantly with Joel. And I would also attend these meetings too. Um this would not have to be a full select board meeting, but to look at all the projects. And then go through them and say, yes, this the this is important, this one's the lower on the totem pole. The final commitment would be for the select board to host them for a final presentation. So there's no money commitment, it's more or less committing that um you'd allow Joel to spend time doing it. And that you would host them at public meeting.
I don't think there's really a con to it because it's stuff that we're gonna have to do.
Well, plus at this, at this point, um we could, we could decide, just uh we're not gonna apply, it would be dumb, but. We're not gonna apply for the grant, we're not gonna, we're not gonna.
Yeah, we just thank you for your time, have a nice night.
That letter shows the risk in in engaging the consultant.
Yes.
And 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 getting the conceptual design.
I move that we um. Move forward with a letter of intent or whatever we need.
It's already written out.
That that's a letter that I drafted and it's the exact same letter that um. That the town of Bennington signed and uh on Tuesday night, I met with the uh village trustees. And North Bennington and they're gonna sign on to the letter. Then once I get the signed letter sent back to me, I forward that to Jim Pease. Who who works for the Department of Environmental Conservation and is managing this program and he'll put you on the list. I guarantee you, if you don't take up this offer, another town will take it like that.
I'll read this letter into the minutes and have Megan add it to the minutes of the meeting. Um from the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation Water Investment Division, here's their address. Dear Mr. Pease, the town of Powell is committed to working with the Vermont DEC and its consultants to develop a stormwater master plan for the town of Powell. We understand this stormwater master plan will identify, map, evaluate and prioritize stormwater problem sites in the town. Will outline appropriate steps the town can take to address the those problems, tech water quality while building a strong, resilient and sustainable community. The highway supervisor and other appropriate town officials will participate in an initial scoping meeting to verify the mutual understanding. The project context and goals. During this meeting, the DEC and its consultant discussed details regarding their approach, will go over technical aspects of the project. The meeting will conclude with a tour of the town and visit sites of known roadway erosion in stormwater problem areas. Excuse me, the DEC and its consultant will prepare a final report and other deliverables for the town review, review, comment and input. The highway supervisor and other officials will attend the final presentation of the stormwater master plan. Sincerely, the Powell Select Board. I move that we sign that letter.
You know what? I'll second that.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I I I think.
There are motions on the table.
I'll I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I was just gonna add, a couple of years ago, we put in for a grant to do that. And I think it was a twenty thousand dollar grant.
With a four thousand dollar match.
With a four, yeah, it was eighty twenty, so this is all.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Post, guys have it. Thank you so much for coming in.
Really, nice job, Jim.
Will you, is this the letter that you want Jimmy to give us a formal copy?
Um I whoever you would like, I've already sent this to Joel in in an email. In a word document, if uh you want me to send it to somebody else, then that's fine, or Joel can just.
No, I think we could, we we could take it from here, we probably want to put it on letterhead and sign it, sign it as a.
You might want to put it on your letterhead.
Yeah, I think that's, that's why, I guess that's what my question was and I just didn't ask it the other way. Okay, perfect, and then we'll enter that into our minutes and go from there, perfect, we can have Megan do that and we can probably. Uh I, do we wanna have? All five board member signatures on there or Angie's is fine, I mean, what do we want to do there?
I think Angie's is fine.
I think A- Angie's I think is probably fine.
I'm fine with that, so uh I move the the board authorize Angie to sign this letter on behalf of the board.
Second it.
Alls in favor?
Want to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming in.
I appreciate the uh invite and interest.
Thank you for the clear presentation, the the benefits where it stood out, thank you.
All right, um so when you have your letter ready, uh you can have somebody just email it to me and then. I will uh move it on to Jim Pease, who will add you to the list.
Okay.
And I think uh he he will want me to kind of be the middleman between them and the town. And that's fine, that wo- that works with my position and what I get paid to do anyways, so. I'll be back in touch with you sooner than later.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Joel.
Okay, uh the only other thing ahead, well, a couple of things actually, we did get the equipment grant. So we don't have to fill out the paperwork until we get the equipment, but we did get six thousand dollars towards a roller.
That's nice.
Um.
Every little bit helps.
Yes, it does, excuse me, yes.
Good luck finding one for six thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's why I said towards a roller.
So another thing we got was um from the state of Vermont. Um they sent a letter in accordance with Title nineteen Vermont State's. Um sections, blah blah blah, blah blah blah, the transportation board. Has promulgated a rule to prevent the abuse of highways from November fifteenth to December thirty-first and January first. To May fifteenth inclusive in each year. Um or until the adoption or announcement of any modification to the rule. Two copies of which enclosed here with in accordance to a section uh number, section twelve, act number two forty-six. And nineteen ninety, this rule is now administered by the Agency of Transportation. So basically, this is, it kind of gives us permission. To shut the roads down in in the mud seasons, basically. Um you read that, we have to post that in in two public places. And I think it said there somewhere, they'd even give you some signs. And you know, in the mud season, well, most any time in in. That um time period, we have a lot of mud. And it really knocks weights down if you look and see at them.
And correct me if I'm wrong.
Look at it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, we, at this time. We have it, we we don't have the real authority.
We have it in our um our permits, you know, our excess weight permits. Where we can shut them down, um basically, I think that says typically in in March, you know, April.
Right, I think that's what the.
Yeah, it says, yeah.
And this.
But this gives us a little wider.
Right, and and this gives us because, because. In the last few years, I've seen the mud season has changed. Significantly, we've had some mud in January, it's been pretty bad, right?
Yes, January, February.
Right, right.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good night everyone.
So if we post that and I guess kind of adopt the rulings. Then when we do have bad mud at any time.
And and I gotta be honest, unfortunately.
Can I just ask one question? Um like if you do shut down a road because of mud, if there's a fire or an ambulance or something, they can still go through.
Well, we're not gonna close the road, it just drops a weight restriction way down.
Okay. But would a fire truck be okay and?
Yeah.
An ambulance? Are exempt from everything, alright, just make it.
They always have press.
So I I agree with this and and unfortunately, our local. Our local contractors aren't the ones who would abuse this.
Correct.
Um road, i- if the road were muddy to start with, our local guys aren't going over the road. It's their tax dollars that are repairing it.
There's actually one road was coal storage I'd liked to had closed back a little while ago in the log truck. Because it did a lot of, did a lot of damage to it.
That's right, that's the one I tried to do, guys, not the pretty romantic farm, but that's okay.
Did do a lot of damage to that one.
Whatever, um. It's it's the out of town contractor that's in here for um working for three, four days a week or whatever. And those those guys, unfortunately, I don't say they don't care because I think they do. But their vested interest is to get their job done.
Get in and get out.
If they damage the road, they damage the road. That's, you know, unfortunate, but. And I don't think, I'm pretty positive that our road foreman, yeah, because you're ultimately in charge of that, right, posting the roads. I gotta believe our road foreman's not gonna inadvertently post a road just to make somebody angry. I gotta believe our road foreman's not gonna inadvertently post a road just to make somebody angry.
Right.
You know, I just, so.
Oh, wouldn't be, I'm sure.
Because most of the guys would be down there at the farm, hunting you down. For sure, so, it wouldn't go well. I, I move, I move that we move forward with this. In posting that, whatever, whatever we need to do.
Yeah, we have to just post it in, in two places. Yeah, places of business.
So we add it to the website and then, uh, post it like we generally do any public information.
Yeah, plus you'll have signage as well.
We can post it, I mean, like, our agendas are posted, the town office reading off here. Town website, Facebook, Winchester's, and the Village Market. If we post it in those places.
We're covered, yes, absolutely.
And if you're making a motion, I'll second it, cover us on the.
Yes, please. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Anything else, Joe?
Basically, state anyhow.
Right.
Um, I wanted to touch base with the Mount Anthony Culver. Um, I'm probably gonna hire Otter Creek Engineering. He's already come down and looked at it. Um, he's putting together a budget right now and, and when I hear from him, uh, if it's absorbed, we'll, you know, keep going with it, with the project. Um, the big thing is, I guess, some of you remember, Bob, you probably do, Ronnie, we had a hard job with the engineer originally hired to do that project. They never gave us a set of working plans. They were all drafts, uh, not made to, to put out to bid at said rate on them and stuff and.
Nothing finalized.
Nobody was really comfortable with it, and the engineer I usually use reached out to that engineer, as we did several times, and he got nowhere with it. So he felt kinda uncomfortable. Uh, Otter Creek, he worked for Otter Creek before he went on his own. Um, I contacted them, they came down and looked at it, and we'll go from there with it. He wants to try to digitize what plans we do have and, and make sure. You know, they, they just weren't comfortable with working with somebody else's plans that weren't complete, basically. We paid a lot of money for them, plans, if you guys remember. Um, one other thing I wanted to ask you guys, now, we always have to borrow a trailer when we need one. Or I bring my own, which I had the last three times, moving the, uh, dog kennels back and forth and, um, moving some blocks over here by the propane tanks and the new, you know, we don't have a trailer. Um, I sometimes borrow Powell, or Bennington's, I sometimes borrow Williamstown. Um, it's, you know, you wear out your welcome after a while. So, if you don't mind, I got some quotes, basically, um, and some sixteen thousand pound trailers, eight ton, nothing big, it's something we can tow, you know, pendle hitch behind the one tons, um, even a big dump truck for me too. But they're not heavy enough to put our excavator on or, you know, but they are, uh, for a small roller, you know, anytime we do that, I always had to borrow a trailer to.
Sweeper or something like that.
Anything like that, yeah, yeah. So, uh, all the Howe brothers, they never got back to me, Kaufman trailers, they never got back to me. Uh, Lucky's, they had, um, gave me three prices, uh, fourteen thousand pound trailer for ninety-eight sixty-three, sixteen thousand pound, but that was like a thirty-foot long trailer, twenty-five, uh, foot deck with a five-foot beaver tail, was sixteen thousand pounds, that was fourteen thousand dollars. And then they had another smaller one that was fourteen thousand pounds smaller with a twenty-foot, uh, deck and a five-foot beaver tail. Um, John's over here in Housick Falls, these are all, uh, um, big tax trailers, they're all the same trailer. Um, he's got two coming in, um, for eleven thousand five hundred dollars. They won't be here until summertime, I'm guessing, they're on order.
That's a sixteen thousand pound.
That's a sixteen thousand pound and eighteen-foot deck in a five-foot beaver tail with, uh, ramps that fold up and make a, these are deck overs, not, not car trailers. Flat, so you can load onto them.
Salem, do they have any, anything there?
Salem?
Farm supply?
So anyhow, I was thinking, if it's alright with you, I'll put my name on one of them.
We have the money in the budget, correct?
Yes, we do. Especially now, see, I brought some more in.
That's right.
But, um, if you don't mind, uh, put our name on one of them and.
I'm, I'm gonna buy a trailer for them. A sixteen thousand pound trailer from J.C. Tractor for eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
That, uh, that's the one you were asking for, right?
Yeah.
It's not it.
It's right there in Housick Falls, you know.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to ask the, uh, uh, I mean, it's a trailer. Is there any option to, to buy a used trailer, or is it, they're just too hard to find?
You know, I talked to a lot of people and what most people tell me is being a town or municipality, you're kinda foolish to buy a used trailer. And, you know, liability reasons and blah, 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 but just, um, yes, I know where there's a twenty-ton now, it needs redecking, uh, it needs some of the shackle work, uh, it's got lots, some parts with it, and you know what I mean? Just, you know, the brakes are new on this thing, right?
As long as we have money in the budget, I don't have a problem buying new.
I agree with Joel, it's really hard to keep going to Williamstown or Bennington or.
Keep borrowing them.
Whoever you go to, every time you have to move some.
And if you do it a lot, it, it.
Yeah.
It, it.
Well, the other thing is, the other thing is, you know, they have a project planned for next Tuesday. They need the trailer, and then Bennington's using their trailer on Tuesday, and Williamstown's using their trailer on Tuesday, and.
And you know, I do use my own trailer in pickups to tow them, just because of liability, that way I'm all, you know, registered, insured, leased in my name, but, you know, that's kinda.
Emergency.
And you shouldn't be doing that, and you shouldn't take that responsibility.
Minor farm duty trailers.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, that's not part of your job, to use your equipment.
No, right, so I, I, I just think it's a smart move.
Yep, so I have a motion? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright, ayes have it. Anything else, Joe?
No, we're good.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Joel.
Alright, so then now we're moving on to Planning Commission Board Member. So we have a letter of intent from Stacy Boxer. Did everybody read that?
Uh, yes.
I think that was, um, that's the only one that we received, right?
Some are retired and lives in Powell.
Right, how many, uh, how many?
We only have one left, right? Again?
Yes, there's one left.
One left, thank you. So this would fill that one position.
And, and, and it's the only, only individual we have showing interest.
Correct.
Oh, I take that back, there are two positions that are open, two vacant.
Two vacant, right?
Yes. One, one person.
Just the one letter, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Joel.
Thanks, Joe.
Um, I've met Mr. Boxer previous to this, um, letter of intent. Um, I've also had some different discussions with him on some different things in town, some proposals that he's had as a zoning administrator. Um, I think he's, from, from the discussions I've had, I think he would be an asset to the Planning Commission, in my opinion.
Okay, can I have a second? Is that the motion, Mike?
I, I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Boxer, sir.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Alright, Property Cleanup questionnaire. They are looking to put out on the website or our Facebook.
So who's they?
The, um, Planning Commission, sorry, excuse me.
That's alright.
The Planning Commission is looking to put a questionnaire or a suggestion box out on the website or on the Facebook about property cleanup. So they are working on bylaws regarding trash cleanup. I don't have a problem with that, we just have to be extremely careful. We don't wanna open up the town to any kind of liability.
What are they talking about, to amend our bylaws that we just recently passed as far as the trash and all that stuff?
I guess this is more in-depth of like.
Individual situations.
Yes, and they're talking about like trash. Trash bags, you know, trash.
Well, I think it, I think a property cleanup questionnaire is fairly general. Um, but I think, I do think that we need some guidance, at least from the zoning standpoint. Um, we could use a little guidance as to what the town itself is looking for on property cleanup. And, I mean, trash is one thing, trash falls into the Health Department. Falls, falls under Fred, the Health Officer. Um, but I don't think putting out a questionnaire is, I don't think it opens us up for, for a bunch of liability because ultimately any amendments and changes to the bylaws have to come back to the board anyway.
Right, I just don't want people using names of people's properties or whatever, is what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a great point, I think, so I think we put some guidelines in it, such as that absolutely no names or addresses.
Right.
You know, this is kind of a general thing.
Yeah.
Um.
So, uh, do, do we have a questionnaire that, that we want, that somebody wants to put out?
I haven't seen any.
I haven't seen one, but the Planning Commissioner, Commission wants to do this.
So, so whether.
Do they, did they show you any kind of questionnaire yet?
Template or.
A template or anything?
Um, no, they just discussed one question, which was, how can we encourage ways to eliminate trash in town?
Okay.
That's the only question that they wanna put out there?
Yes.
Repeat that question again, please.
How can we encourage ways to eliminate trash in town?
Okay.
Throw it up there and they can, they can.
Right.
People can offer suggestions.
Well, if that's the question, if that's the question that the Planning Commission is asking, I don't see any harm in that because you're not.
Pinpoint.
Pinning, pinpointing anything, they're asking for specifics.
Personally, I don't see a, I don't see a problem.
They're asking, can they post a?
They're asking if they can post that question on our website and Facebook.
Well, isn't our, isn't our website, one of them is, is, um, no comments, right, Megan?
Yeah.
If so, if it's a questionnaire, it's probably gonna be on the website.
Yeah.
Okay, on Facebook, there's no commenting.
It's right, Facebook, there's no comments, that's what I thought.
So it'd be just our, our website?
Just the website.
Are we a hundred percent sure that it's not, it's not, that it is just that one question, or is it, uh, or are they asking about with the goal of eliminating, uh, trash? Can we, uh, can we, should, can or should we come up with a questionnaire? Uh, to put out to the citizens? I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
Megan, isn't, um, doesn't the Planning Commission have a meeting next Tuesday?
Yes, the eighteenth.
Right, and I was invited to that as a zoning administrator. Um, so maybe, maybe what we do is let's, and I hate this word, I hate to table anything. But if we table it to our regular meeting on the twenty-seventh, maybe we can bring back, because this is on their agenda for the meeting of the eighteenth. Maybe we can bring back a clearer picture of exactly what they're looking for for the twenty-seventh and move forward at that point. And I hate to table stuff, I'm, ugh, I don't know how much that hurt.
You said we're moving.
But we need some clarification. And we, and we wanna make sure that, uh, that if we do post something on our website, that we all agree on the questions, and they're not leading, they're not, they're not trying to.
If they, if they had sent in a questionnaire, that they're.
That we can look at and.
That'd be one thing, but they didn't really do that.
Yeah.
Unless it really was just that one question, and, but we need the clarification, right?
And I'll, I'll attend, I'll attend that meeting on the eighteenth and be able to bring back, um, the information on the twenty-seventh. Our, our next regular meeting's the twenty-seventh, I'm pretty sure, right?
Yes.
So let's, let's put that, Megan, let's put that on the agenda for the twenty-seventh, please.
Okay.
And should we also just send an email to the, the, the Chair, just to clarify, to clarify whether or not a questionnaire already exists? Are you asking to create a questionnaire? I, I think we should, that's just an email, right?
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could send, we could send the Chair of the Planning Commission that email, Megan. You know, the, the, the Select Board is, um, you know, wondering if there's a questionnaire, if it's just the one question, and then we can discuss that at the meeting on, on the eighteenth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, moving on to number twelve, CAT TV. Do we need to discuss, discuss that any further, or do you think we made it clear last week?
Well, I think.
I just wanted everybody to be aware that we pay six thousand dollars a year for the contract, and the contract is only for our regular Select Board meetings. And if we ask them to do other meetings, it's gonna cost more money, obviously.
I thought it's regular Select Board meetings and the town meetings.
That's correct.
Okay.
But now that we're on Zoom, we, we, just like we said, just, uh, but since we brought it up, we'll.
Right.
Since we do post those to our, uh, to both YouTube and our, and, and our, uh.
Website.
Website, yeah.
Well, not our website, our Facebook page.
And it's on YouTube.
And it's on YouTube.
Yeah.
But it's not on our website, I don't think.
But there is some.
It's not on townofpoundle.org, but it is on our Facebook site and it is on YouTube, is what I think, but I'm not sure. It might be on townofpoundle.org, but.
I have it right here.
It's available in the document archive with the minutes and agendas.
Yep.
On, on the Town and Poundle website, correct?
Yes.
Oh, alright.
Yes, Megan, thank you.
Yeah.
But we've got some people that don't have that.
A lot of people that don't have it.
So that's why we. Well.
A lot of people don't have.
Okay. Moving on.
It's on public television.
Public comment. Please remember to raise your hand, state your full name, and three minutes. Thank you, Megan.
You need a minute to get to the time.
Oh, just a second, Mike's getting his timer out.
I'm good.
Okay, Megan.
Jim?
Hello, Jim Kosis, Mason Hill Road. Um, since we had that little, um, um, I guess, discussion on my com, uh, my, um, letter that I sent in, I just wanted to follow up. Um, there is, as you know, the statutes are a little, um, confusing and vague and at certain times, but I'd like to just read a V L T C opinion about adding items to agenda. Um, our opinion is that the language in one VSA three one two D, three A, there is your statute, does not give a public body free rein to alter a meeting agenda at the last minute. Instead, our advice is that, once the deadline for posting an agenda has passed, forty-eight hours in advance of a regular meeting, and twenty-four hours in advance of a special meeting, items should only be added to the agenda when necessary to deal with an unforeseen occurrence or condition requiring immediate action. All other cases, an item that has not been listed on a posted agenda should not be discussed at a last-minute addition. Instead, the body should place the item on the agenda of their next regular meeting, or Of their next regular meeting or if necessary call a duly noticed. Special meeting to address that item taking this approach will assure that and this is the most important thing for panel. The public has adequate advance notice and an opportunity to be heard. On all topics to be discussed and decided by the public body. Now I'm not gonna hold this against your board I'm gonna hold this against prior boards but I just don't like to see items added at the last minute. There were have decisions made many years ago that agendas were changed and things were put on the agenda. And a decision was made and a vote was taken and people were not part of the whole thing. So my basic suggestion is if we can refrain from adding so many items. That are not necessarily necessary to be discussed or a decision made like tonight then I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Megan anybody else raising their hand?
Mindy Joe.
Hello my name is Mindy Joe Harrington and can you hear me?
Yes we can.
Alright so back in September I had Fred Miller come down to the verdict trailer park. To assess a couple of things was told to send an email to Mister Gardner. November ninth at four twenty-nine PM I sent an email to Mike Gardner. And then um didn't hear nothing didn't set up a a meeting or walk through September thirteenth. Um Georgette um Sullivan complained about something that wasn't discussed but something was done because now. The estate isn't being held accountable Mindy Joe Harrington is. Personally there's nothing about the estate there or attention executor um. Monday I have a roll-off and an excavator coming okay I don't know how to run it but I'm gonna attempt it. Jeff Miller gave me a price of four thousand dollars to do the road however it cannot be done until spring. The weather's preventing it and you gotta have the freeze frost heaves out of it um. Oh my goodness so there's garbage stacked straight up to the ceiling inside of lot six also um Harvey's yard. And the sheds um people have taken liberties to use um his sheds for storage. I just I'm at a loss for words over this two hundred dollar a day finding Mindy Joe Harrington. When that road I've been trying but when I got people that don't pay rent that all they want to do is complain and don't want to pay their way through things. It makes it impossible to do um I don't understand why I didn't get my request. For the walk-through after Mike before he left for his hunting trip Mister Gardner said to email him and he would get back to me. He never did then you guys waited for a complaint and now I'm I'm in violation. Of zoning by law eight point four point three streets and parking and zoning by law eight. That eight dot four dot solid waste water supply and wastewater disposal. Now if I don't have this stuff done in thirty days I will be fined um not more than two hundred dollars a day. I'll see uh Jeff Miller Senior gave me a quote of four thousand dollars and it can't be done till spring Robert Russell. Said he would do it for nothing if I could rent the equipment but it can't be done till spring. Julie Weber's tenants she gave permission to move in here as part of the reason why they're so bad with their wheelers side by side. And four-wheel drive trucks they get in the holes when it's muddy up there and spin the tires and sling mud okay? None of y'all know this cuz you're not here in it okay I get it I'm hard to deal with I don't always work things properly. I come off rough around the edges I come off bold and. Whatnot I don't mean to it's just who I am I'm fighting for my home here. Alright and this letter notice of violation is directed directly at me.
Excuse me but your time's up.
Yes you're right have a good night goodbye.
Anybody else out there?
There's no one else raising their hand.
Okay.
So I mean a couple of things Bob has some something.
Oh I don't I just.
Remember it's just public comment.
Yeah but.
Okay um.
I I'm I'd like to. I'd like to make a statement on Mister Kosis's comments and Mindy Joe's at this point. So uh Mindy Joe I believe is probably absolutely correct that the letter should have gone to the estate. And we will re.
Send that like we already discussed that with Megan.
We will re I will resend that letter to the estate that's an error on my part um. As far as the dates I'm not totally sure I'd have to look back on the dates of whatever um. I believe one of them was but I was gone away so. We will resend the letter to Mindy Joe or to the estate I'm sorry to the estate. And um of the zoning violations. Now just because we send the letter with the zoning violations and the potential for a fine. Doesn't mean that that's the course of action that should be taken. Okay that's and I just want to be clear on that but we have to. Send the letter of zoning violations wherever they need to go and there's gonna be more to follow just so the board knows not. Not to Burdick's Trailer Park so I want to be clear on that uh that when I say there's more to follow it's different. There's some different things in town that we're looking at and moving forward on um. So we will resend that to the correct place okay Megan and I discussed that earlier tonight. Um and then it'll go where it needs to go and then we can. Discuss and rectify the violations however. The I guess it would be the executor of the estate and the zoning administrator being me however we deem necessary. To 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 rectify the violations which doesn't necessarily mean a fine. But you have to put that in there as a potential this is potentially what could happen okay? As far as Mister Kosis's comment.
Can I uh can I just ask the question? Is there a uh so no one currently for for that property no one is incurring a daily fine right?
No absolutely not.
Okay I just want to make sure.
No there's no fines being incurred right now.
Just the question I had.
No for sure for sure no good question good question no no and like I said I mean just because we put that in a letter of zoning violation. No matter where it goes to doesn't mean that they're gonna incur a fine.
It means it could be potentially be fined.
It just means that you know if someone if someone wants to work with me and 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 go ahead as a zoning administrator. I think I've shown I've shown that once already with a fine that was levied on someone and I cut the fine in half.
Good faith effort.
And good faith they showed good faith effort and that's fine I I get that I I get things I'm not uh. I'm a person who lives in town I I understand what it takes to have things done I'm not some robot that doesn't understand what's going on.
Yeah yeah I just want to make sure that you were clear that uh.
Nobody's being fined.
Nobody's being fined right now. So. On on Mister Kosis's uh comment when necessary that's kind of a couple of key words. So tonight on the old business in my opinion adding the three items that we added. To our agenda were necessary one of them adding a budget meeting date. For next week. For planning was necessary the ARPA funding was necessary. And getting the word out about the kennel to me was necessary. Now if we want to live in the past because a board thirty years ago did something that we didn't like or ten years ago or. Three years ago or something that we did last year then let's live in the past but we're never gonna move forward. We're always gonna be in the past and and I for one don't want to live in the past I want to keep moving forward. And I I totally understand his point that something happened blah 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 whatever um. But I think as a board we've been up and up on everything that we've done.
I I I agree that uh um a couple of things one is we we when we use executive session. For the time that I've been on this board I think uh when I first got on the board I think there were a couple of times and no one was here except me back then. There were a couple of times that uh uh we were not using executive session appropriately but but we thought we were. Uh it wasn't it wasn't on purpose it wasn't to hide things but in the last year year and a half two years we've had a lot of legal actions. And every time that I know of that we used executive session I am almost certain we were required to do it. It was it was it wasn't just that we were using it it was it was actually a requirement. But I do want to say something about the the correspondence that we got from uh uh from Mister Kosis's. Uh um and and his clarifying remarks so I I actually I I appreciate them because. What he what he identified there really is a best practice. I I I think. There may be some misconception that we're abusing that but I don't think this board is at all but everything he itemized in there is a best practice. If we know what we're gonna be talking about it shouldn't just be under old business it ought to be identified as to exactly what we're doing. And we ought to be giving the public some advanced notice of it and I think for the most part we do that. And then when we talk about the things tonight that we talked about I mean absolutely one of them was just scheduling. And one of them was a forewarning that in the in budget meeting we're gonna be talking about ARPA also so that was actually. Uh we didn't do it tonight we just talked about what we were gonna do in the future and I I uh I certainly no problem with that.
Can I just have one minute rebuttal?
No.
No.
No. Thank you.
I I just appreciate everything you guys.
I just I don't I don't wanna I don't wanna get into them I would rather be extra ex well. That's fine let's give him a minute that's fine.
First of all I was not saying anything about against you guys any anything exec about executive sessions. I was basically saying moving forward yes Mike I want to move forward I think it's best that. I don't have to look at an uh uh agenda or come in at seven o'clock to just find out what's gonna be discussed. I like to look at it on Tuesday if nothing important's gonna be there on Tuesday I'm not gonna attend the meeting I have other things to do too so. I'm basically just saying out there please do not try to add so many things to an agenda on the night of the meeting. There are many other meetings that can show up later on or please have a special meeting if it's something that's important that's all I'm saying I'm not. I think everything has been going great so far um in this past year I thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you Jim and and I didn't mean to and sorry I'm. I just wanted to make it clear that the that that what he itemized in that thing are best practices.
Yeah for sure and and I think.
But I also want to make it clear just like you did that we do adhere to those best practices.
There's certain things that pop up after a Tuesday agenda that need to be taken care of and I. I for one am not. And I'm probably never gonna change this I'm not one for putting stuff off if it pops up deal with it and take care of it now. I've I've watched and been involved in years bringing back the past where they table everything for months and months and months. Nothing ever gets done and and I I'm not that kind of person and I never will be it's. Bring it up and get it done.
Moving forward do we have an executive session for personnel that we need to go into?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Alright so then that case.
I moved to a gym.
Can I have a second?
I'll take it.
All those in favor? Thank you everybody have a good night.